I said something first. Is that how these ones?
I heard you.
You heard me first? I said something first. Wait a minute, hold on Tom, we can't do that.
No.
We not gonna do that. We can't do that.
I am chairing the meeting and I recognize...
I don't chair, who we chair? Wait a minute, I, 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 I spoke first.
Everybody's talking. They have to eat. They pay for the fight. Right. Counselor, yes, yes. I must say, you're a junior. Counselor, yes, yes. The motion is not out for the council. The court will not let the council have it. Not this going in. This is the way. And the motion is out for the council. It's out for the council.
Why is that such a big upset for the rabbi?
Yes.
It's only four, ain't no court. That's right.
Vote them out. Vote them out.
We want them out.
Vote them out.
We will be here after we do this. And I will do this. And I'm a police officer in this place. Well, what a hand on this. I'm not gonna do this. This is the most difficult day for this entire municipal council. This entire, we've afforded each other liberties and now we're gonna run this gate? We just got over, we just got over an election. A national election. We talked about voter suppression and other side. If this is, if this is the height of exactly what we fought against, we all will be ashamed. We all will be ashamed.
We heard Ross first.
This is the day, and I don't use this term lightly, that will live in infamy. That will live in infamy. And so I ask you, my council colleagues, that I've worked with for two and a half years, to reconsider what you're about to do, because this is not representative of the democracy. It is not representative. And if some people are so desperate, so desperate to push something through, then let everybody know, and I hope this is recorded, all of the doors eyes, over what you're about to do. And let me give you all of your hands, back up here, what you can do.
Stand up. Stand up.
Mr. Attorney. Uh, private procedure. Whenever there is a change in the order of business, the correct way to do it is to request a motion to change the order of business. That's how our council meetings are run through acting by the law. That's how it's done. This is the first time in the history of this council that I know that people who are so desperate to gain power have, have decided to mutilate and to alter the order of business. All we ask, all we know when I get it, we can ask for some respect. And we know that some of you, some of you, Alex, that's, it means nothing. What you are doing right now is dividing this city along what your minds and along the lines that DeMar, how we do business with one another. So the bodies on your hands, and shame on you, the bodies, shame on you, for having to do this. If you had said something out of the campers' hand, it would have been different. But guess what? I will say is the one fourteen in this county. The one fourteen in this county. You may be, but you can wait. And you may love to carry the north, and you may love to carry the east, but you cannot and will not carry the west, the south, and the central. Shame on you.
Um, I just want to address, uh, Senator, uh, when we leave this forum here, so I don't know how a meeting is taking place. I think number one, number two, everybody in this council chamber, pardon me, raise, so I can raise my hand, but everybody say, uh, council president before anybody. You should, y'all should have had that plan, it'd be better that somebody jump right in and say that. I said something, and he deliberately did not recognize me. I think that is completely and totally unfair. It doesn't matter if we agree or disagree. Listen, doesn't matter if we agree or disagree, but you cannot obstruct democracy in the process of doing this. I cannot obstruct. I have nobody to disagree with. But what I am, what I am shocked about is, because I see, uh, our husband is big over there. I have never seen him at a council meeting since I paid him. I actually started to appreciate the guy at the store. Because I thought he was a good guy. But, uh, when we hear talking about the innuendo, it's not here. When we hear talking about, uh, issues as per about the movement, see, I haven't seen him here. But I'm starting to believe that all of you guys have a plan for this to take place. And I hope that I'm wrong, but it seems a bit sinister what's going on here. There seems a bit sinister. Right. Uh, there's a problem for me, and I'm gonna tell you this. I have something on agenda tonight that I need to be voted on, but I will walk out of here tonight and not vote on it if you guys think you're gonna destroy this town and obstruct democracy this way or that. And, uh, I will see what you're talking about.
This council president, and it concerns the statues of this very church. And there's a lack of a form where they have the statutory opportunity obligation to sit in here and prove for all of that they are a form.
Uh, Mr. Ross, uh, Mr. Ross, yes, you're the one here. So, like, you can't take over the council meeting. Can't I take over the council meeting? And I, and I'll take over the council meeting.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Paul.
Take over, and I'll have to get the council board. And that, that's what you said, Justice. Still, I think it's long. Yes, so, so, yeah, it's that. Oh. No. Can't be done. That's good. You understand, everything is, I don't think that's the thought.
I was under, I didn't know thing. I mean, that was an airport. A mayor that goes all the way around this country and talks about democracy. And he is not here. I can't see that. Uh, Justice. And you allow this to happen?
Bye-bye.
We depend on this clerk, this clerk to lie us.
What? My good dinner, a statue, by the corporation counsel, go ahead, go ahead. May I read the statue? May I read the statue? Forty-eight, oh, nine, DS, one, three, two. In every municipality, unless otherwise provided by law, if the governing body should, should pay out to organize an elected president or chairman at its annual meeting, B, to fill any vacancy in office or position, C, to adopt any resolution or ordinance, or D, to take any other action whatsoever by reason of a tie or insufficient vote among the members, the mayor shall pass, in aid of said organization, the election of candidates, appointment of officers or others, adoption of resolutions or ordinances, or the taking of any other action.
That does not apply to municipal government. You never said it once. You said corporations, organizations.
I did not. I said in every municipality.
Where, where is, uh, council president? The clerk said that he got that from corporation counsel. Where is corporation counsel? I wanna say corporation counsel right now. Where were they?
Mr. clerk?
So they hand off something to you, now you're a lawyer?
Mr. clerk? I read a statement into the record. We opened up the organization, and our council leaders, uh, did research on that. That's who I saw, like, the chairman. It was Saturday, we had a roll call, and the mayor cast the fifth vote.
Are you kidding me?
You know what? The shame on that meat was being used by the mayor, and I still got that.
But, but, you say what you want, man?
And, and it's a better time out here.
Everybody see that this, if this is happening, now, it's not sitting in that seat. I'm not serious. You can't be serious. Just like the two white ladies here, man.
Anybody got a card?
The rest of them, I need to read that shit again, it's not now. And I need to see that, that bill now.
Change.
Course she voted, in place of her.
Let me see. As you said, any will meet. Now I don't know what that is. You said, "Any will meet." I don't know what that is, man. I've never even seen that. Yeah. That's, that is, that is wrong.
Hello, Ty, go ahead. I, I appreciate it.
Need a more, need a more.
What?
Go ahead. I need to see that. Yes, I need to see that corner. I need to see that corner. I need to see that statue. Yeah, we must be wrong. We must be wrong. I don't know what that, I don't know what that any will meet thing is. I ain't no meet. I don't see the ordinance. No. The rest of them, we can count down. Right, we can count down.
Who's next?
That's right.
This is right, this is right. Please, man.
Hey, that's really bad, that's really fucking hell for that one. Damn, boy, you say.
Yo, yo, yo. Calm down.
You fucking boys, you don't talk at all.
That's the Lord. Sit down. Sit for the sport. I appreciate them both.
Just another half minute was here. We had.
Love it. Yeah, we got it.
Right. They made some.
Why would you spray pepper spray in a closed chamber?
Can you please back up, please?
It's a hat.
Anybody, do me a favor, move back to the second bench.
Why would you spray pepper spray in a closed chamber? What kind of shit is that?
You're not going with pepper spray, right?
They pepper spray everything over there. You can't smell it?
Yeah, but, but, yeah. Even the racist.
There is a law. Did you notice? Yeah. Come here, we ain't right. We have a council in this way. I'm a right man. And help them or let somebody who doesn't know anything about democracy. We need a woman, yeah. We need a right woman to actually tell them, to actually print them. We have all of those things that you need to serve, and not listen to just a man. Because she would not be here. And they could use her, as she is. This is now that way. It's about the right one. Both guys out to see that battle with Cory Booker, and then with the Ramos, Carlos Gonzalez, Luis C. Towns, and Alvin Nenico. I guarantee, every vote she makes will be wack their town.
He's the one that sprayed pepper spray.